This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of an annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are one filed with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this. More fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I would ask that anyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP TV. Would you please join me in plexalitance?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now take roll call. James Bonanno.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Eric Galloppa.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Daniel Shanameo.
Here.
Jennifer Sauter.
Here.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak is absent today.
Michael Gunnin, I'm sorry. I forgot about you. That won't happen again.
Okay. Okay, for old business, the first item on the agenda is 700 Monroe, 500 Main Block, 2305 blocks 1 through 5. The applicant has requested that we carry this to March the 20th meeting, but prior to that meeting, they've also requested a meeting with the DRC. Correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Secretary, Madam Secretary, you get some dates available?
We'll work on the dates tomorrow.
And the next hearing date then is, I'm sorry, March?
You're going to be March 20th, 2023.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we need a motion to carry that?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to carry it?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay. James Bonanno.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Eric Galloppa.
Yes.
Michael Gunnin.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo.
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Kerzak is absent today.
Okay, next item on the agenda is 545 Lake Avenue, and after consultation with the Board Attorney and the applicant, there's a request to carry that to February 27th, 2023.
Excellent.
Can we get a motion to carry that?
So moved.
Second.
Question.
Oh, question?
I'm sorry, did you start the roll call?
No, I did not.
You're moving it to the 27th? 27th, yes. Then there'll be three on that night. It's just a resolution. Okay.
I assume that the motion I'm making includes an agreement from the applicant that time extension will be granted.
Excellent.
James Bonanno.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Eric Galloppa.
Yes.
Michael Gunnin.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo.
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak is absent today.
Motion carried. Okay, the new business, next item on the agenda is 614 Cookman Avenue LLC.
Old business. However, I am trying to find out where my architect is.
Okay, you want us to?
We're calling him right now to find out where he is.
Okay, so we'll, uh...
Which one?
So we'll go to the next?
If you may recall from the last year, we're just coming back from signage. I think everything else is taken care of, it's that one issue. I'll be back in about one minute, we're trying to call him.
So we'll move to the next one then.
Okay. If, for some reason, he was calmer bit and he's not going to be here tonight, I would request we put another date on for it, because I don't have to sit here during the...
Sure. Okay.
Not that I don't like the other operations, but...
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 20210 Fifth Avenue Venture Urban Renewal Amendment to Final Site Plan Approval in Order to Build Using Temporary Tent Structure Within the Outdoor Patio Area in Connection with Outdoor Events. Size of proposed tent structure will vary based on size and nature of the event. Also seeking approval to erect an approximately 480 square foot accessory storage shed to be used for storage of tables and chairs for events held when the tent is in use.
Rick, I have to accuse myself.
Okay.
Accused. Yep. 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 Have you heard that's so awkward today? No. It's okay, because we have time, I just want to make sure it's not... Is yours on this? It's yours on this. It's yours on this. All right. So we're supposed to be tented yesterday?
Oh yeah, it was packed.
Quick question, I feel like the old fashioned way to have pictures.
So I just went into rice today and it was such a...
Yeah. It's nice, it's good. Yes, it's weird. You can do... Chinese food. Yeah. I had takeout though.
That's where I started my venture to make Chinese food. And I get sushi.
It was Monday, not a good day. Seen the one on the lookout? It's not... You don't like the one? Yeah, it was closed. I should know, yeah, but I had takeout from there one night. Okay, you ready?
Yes.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Porter, I'm the attorney for the applicant, and we are here this evening. This is an application by 210 Fifth Avenue Venture Urban Renewal LLC, which is an affiliate of the master redeveloper for the waterfront redevelopment area. The applicant is here this evening, seeking amended final site plan approval in connection with the Asbury Hotel. The Asbury Hotel is located, as everyone I'm sure is very familiar with, at 200 to 210 Fifth Avenue. It's known as Block 4104, Lot 13, and commonly known as the Asbury Hotel. The property, as I indicated, is located within the waterfront redevelopment area, and more specifically, the applicant is here this evening in connection with permitting two accessory uses. The first is the erection and use of a tent area, a tent structure rather, that would be located within the hotel's outdoor patio area, as needed, in connection with outdoor events. And then the second accessory use that we're seeking approval for this evening is for the construction and installation of a 480 square foot storage shed in the northeasterly quadrant of the property. So just to give the board a little bit of background, the Asbury Hotel is a 110-room boutique hotel with ancillary amenities, a swimming pool, parking, et cetera. The hotel originally received site plan approval from this board by way of a resolution which was adopted in November of 2014, and the planning board subsequently adopted resolutions granting amendments to that approval in March of 2016 and March of 2017. Since its opening in 2016, the hotel has been a very popular venue for various weddings, corporate events, meetings, gatherings, and other community events such as art shows and craft shows. The applicant has been utilizing event tents for outdoor events at the hotel pursuant to the issuance of city permits for a number of years. However, there is a city ordinance which limits the number of tent events and tents that can be erected to 14 times per year and within a 12-month period. So the applicant is here this evening because they would like the ability to hold outdoor events, including weddings, craft festivals, art fairs, et cetera, throughout the entire year without a limitation on the number of events, and as such, the zoning officer, based on conversations with the city, recommended that the applicant apply for site plan approval, which is why we're here before the board this evening. As will be discussed in the testimony, different tents will be utilized depending upon the size of the event and the time of the year. The shed, which is the other piece of our application, was not originally part of this application. We had actually applied and were proceeding and had been scheduled to appear in front of TRC, and we actually added in a component to allow for the 480 square foot shed, because we had actually applied separately, or the applicant rather, had applied separately for zoning permit for that use, but ultimately it was determined that since it's for the same hotel as another accessory use and because we are already doing a supplemental subsequent developer agreement, it just made sense to kind of combine the two as part of this application. So even though they're unrelated for purposes of tonight's meeting, because they're both accessory aspects of the hotel, we are seeking site plan approval for both of those pieces. In connection with the application before the board this evening, the applicant appeared before City Council, which confirmed that both of these uses are permitted accessory uses under the waterfront redevelopment plan, and they referred this matter to the planning board for its review this evening. And to discuss the application in greater detail, we intend to call two witnesses. So first, we have Bob Curley of Colliers Engineering. He prepared the plot plan depicting the location of the proposed tent structure in general area, as well as the shed. And then our second witness this evening will be Eric Larkin of Spirit Tens. Spirit Tens is the entity that has worked with the city over the past few years historically and continues to work with the applicant in connection with the proposed tent structures. We also have David Fergel, a representative of the applicant, the vice president of land and development for Asbury Partners, who can address further questions regarding the tent or shed if needed. So with that, I'd like to begin with our first witness.
Okay.
Great, Mr. Curley? I'm sure the board is familiar with Mr. Curley, and he's been qualified previously, but I'm happy to qualify again if needed.
No, I'm familiar with him.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I did.
Could you just state your name and spell it for the record?
Robert Curley, C-U-R-L-Y-P. A licensed professional planner, professional engineer at the State of New Jersey. So, just one of the aspects, just so that everyone's understanding, the locations of the proposed tent area, which is the lighter gray shaded...
I literally split my screen.
Good to see. So, the smaller view that's in the, at the top part of the screen depicts two rectangular areas. One is a lighter hatch gray, and the other is a darker hatch gray.
Yeah.
The lighter hatch gray is the area that is an existing patio, and that's where the tent area is intended to be utilized. The darker area is the proposed shed area, and that's a 480 square foot shed, and again, it's immediately adjacent to where a sidewalk exists today. And the purpose of the shed is to actually supply chairs and tables for the tent events and have storage for those areas when the tent is not being utilized, and also to store some of the pool supplies for the overall property. Really, that's pretty basic, and that's pretty much the thrust of the application. The shed is located approximately, it's like 32 feet from the edge of the sidewalk. I know it's referenced in the reviews being about 25 feet, but... One of the items that was requested was to have some additional plantings placed for, to help shade or hide the shed or screen the shed. And in one of the end of the reviews, it was suggested that the hedge row be consistent with the hedge row that exists along the edge of the parking lot, and just to extend that to the edge of the sidewalk. And we'd be happy to relocate the proposed plantings. One thing I did want the board a suggestion is that proposed plantings that I had indicated on the plans were privated. We have no problems putting them in, however, looking at the existing hedge that's there today that's immediately adjacent to the parking lot, it's not a private hedge, it's a deciduous shrub, and again, we can make it a consistent shrub, and I just want to continue.
I'm not sworn, we're fine with matching or other plant area.
Other than that, there's really, there's really not a whole lot to this, not a lot to think about. As far as utilities that would potentially be needed for this, we're going to be running electricity to the shed, just so that we can have some lights on the inside of the shed, but there will be no exterior, no new exterior lighting proposed in the tent area and/or on the shed, so there are no new lighting other than what's going to be on the inside of the shed. And as far as any potential needs that would exist were be proposed from the shed area, it's going to be directed onto the grass, which ultimately drains to an inlet that's in the parking lot right behind the shed.
So what's the floor for the shed and the tent? Is it patio blocks or is it grass?
The tent area is an existing concrete patio.
Okay. What about with the shed?
The shed right now is grass.
And it's going to be on the patio?
Yes.
And that's going to be permanent, but the tent is going to be taken, that's going to be up and down?
That's correct.
And what is the shed going to be constructed in?
It'll be a masonry brick that we're going to try to match the exterior of the existing brick that's on the hotel today.
Mr. Curley, on the patio, you use that patio now for putting tents up, Spirit Tens?
Yes, we do.
How are they anchored?
So the tent operator's here, and he can talk to, because there's multiple configurations for different tents, and I don't want to misspeak, and I'd rather have them...
Yeah, he'll take you through the process of tent setup and takedown.
And, basically, the shed that you're talking about there is a brick box with a door in it, right?
That's correct.
Can't you do something to make it a little bit more interesting? Something maybe at the roof line, or... It's going to be visible from Kingsley. And, how about using some imagination to make it a little bit nicer looking? I don't have any suggestions for what it might be, but, you know, just a rectangular box?
The intent is to have a slighted roof on it, but just a slight pitch roof. The intent was not to have a...
All I'm saying...
Again, matching with the exterior of the hotel, the hotel, I don't mean to play down the hotel, the hotel is boxy.
Yeah, it's boxy, but it has some characteristics to it that make it look good, and that's my point. You're going to have a rectangular box next to the hotel. I realize it's, you know, very miniscule in comparison, but can't something be done to make it look a little better?
Something for the dress up there.
I'm making a suggestion to you.
Maybe some perimeter banding at the top for trim work, easily to be in. That would match the exterior of the hotel and whatever painting that we have.
I would like it a lot better if it did.
Sure.
Can I ask a question, Jeff?
I think we're swearing.
We're going to swear, we're next.
Our experts. Don and Jason, you swear that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I did.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question to you? So, there's a ordinance that limits the amount of tent operations, right? You can, I thought council said that.
That's correct.
So, what are we doing? Is there a variance or special for this property that they can exceed that? Is that what we're doing?
Don, I think you could probably answer that better than I can.
So, yeah, the permitting process for a tent is outside the land development regulations, the zoning ordinance. So, the board isn't actually giving relief from that provision, it can't. But by making the tent a part of the permanent structure permitted on the property, they can get around that.
Oh, like as a temporary accessory use?
A temporary permanent ordinance, yeah.
Correct.
Versus a temporary...
That's why we're seeking site plan approval for this to be a permitted accessory use to the hotel under the redevelopment plan.
Okay, that makes sense.
As opposed to proceeding under the zoning ordinance.
Right.
And it's a permitted accessory use under the plan?
Yeah, so if I understand what you're saying is, tent area is really not under the zoning land use, it's a special permitted...
Yeah, it's part of the, is it events or is it under...
Is it like special events?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's one of the regular general legislation type of laws, yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay.
Okay, we can have our next witnesses.
Mr. Larkin. Larkin, I was going to say Spur, I knew that wasn't right. You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay. Mr. Larkin, could you please state your full name and business address?
Eric Larkin, 19, Spirit Tens, New Jersey, 1924 Hecav, Neptune, New Jersey.
Great, and can you please explain for the board your affiliation with Spirit Tens?
Owner.
And how long have you been employed?
15 years.
Or owner? Great. And has Spirit Tens served as the tent vendor for the Asbury in connection with its outdoor events?
Yes.
And for how long?
Since the inception of the hotel, which I think was 2016.
Great. And as such, you're familiar with the design details for the tent that were provided to this board?
Absolutely.
Great, and you're also familiar with the policies that have been utilized in connection with tent installation and use?
Yes.
Great. First, I'd like to begin, and you'll be speaking tonight really as a fact witness with the understanding that you're essentially the main individual responsible for installing tents for these outdoor events that we're speaking of and seeking approval for this evening.
Yes.
Okay. Let's start with the tent proposal. You're aware that the applicant is seeking to maintain tents for the entirety of the year, and that different tents are required depending upon what time of the year or what specific event is being held at the Asbury. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, could you walk us through, let's begin with the summer months. Could you walk us through essentially what the procedure is at the beginning of the summer season, and the tent and type of events and installation?
Certainly. Good evening, board members and professionals. It's a frame tent manufactured by Anchors, Anchor Industries. It is the same frame. In the summertime, of course, there's less side walls and more fans applied. Great, and you're also familiar with the policies that have been utilized in connection with tent installation and use?
Yes.
Great, first I'd like to begin, and you'll be speaking tonight really as a fact witness with the understanding that you're essentially the main individual responsible for installing tents for these outdoor events that we're speaking of and seeking approval for this evening.
Yes.
Okay, let's start with the tent proposal. You're aware that the applicant is seeking to maintain tents for the entirety of the year and that different tents are required depending upon what time of the year or what specific event is being held at the Asbury, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, could you walk us through, let's begin with the summer months. Could you walk us through essentially what the procedure is at the beginning of the summer season and the tent and type of events and installation?
Certainly. Good evening, board members and professionals. It's a frame tent manufactured by Anchors, Anchor Industries. It is the same frame. In the summertime, of course, there's less side walls and more fans applied. In the wintertime, more side walls and industry standard heaters, propane heaters for the tents.
Okay, and in the wintertime, is it your understanding that the tent would be taken down in between events? Whereas during the summer months essentially, the tent would remain up depending upon the different events in terms of size?
Tents definitely removed more in the wintertime and on the property more in the warmer months for certain.
Could you discuss the approximate sizes and potential layouts, I guess, for the tents?
The most common sizes for the area are 30 by 30, 30 by 65, and 30 by 80. That's all feet for the tent sizes.
And what we did in connection with the site plan application, if you could look at the plot plan that was just previously testified to by Mr. Curley, all of those tents would be essentially erected within the frame, within the boxed area shown on the plan.
Correct.
So they would not exceed or go outside of that perimeter?
Correct.
Let's talk about tent policy, obviously in the wintertime or for that matter even during the summer months, sometimes we deal with extreme weather conditions. Could you talk about your tent policy with respect to, first, let's begin with in the event that there may be snow in the forecast?
So if there's snow in the forecast, we activate our winter tent snow load response policy. Normally means that we have an attendant on site during, while the snow is falling. And we have these large tools, or it's a big foam board that we use to get the snow off the tent. If there is extreme wind or extreme snow, let's say tropical storm or above for wind or snow, like blizzard conditions where we're not sure if we're going to be able to get to the site, then we'll remove the vinyl. If it's too windy, remove the vinyl off the frame. And if it's extremely, blizzard conditions, we'll just, we'll remove the tops of the tent, let the snow fall, shovel the area out, put the tent, the house back on when needed.
And are these policies that you just described, or these practices detailed in a policy that was provided to the city in connection with this application?
Yes.
And let's talk about, you described high wind situations. Let's talk about the types of events typically that are held at the Asbury. You have set up tents in the past for what type of events?
Mainly weddings, family events, and then like you said, fairs and things like that. I think Senator ran Christmas shopping.
And when you set up the tents, you don't remain on the site with the tent, but you're on call?
Yes.
So to the extent that that would be a situation regarding any type of issue with the tent, you would be able to come and essentially address that issue?
Correct.
Is that 24/7?
Yes.
Okay, and what was the procedure in the past in terms of setting up for the tents? Would you apply to the city for a permit?
Yes, yep, absolutely.
And so in connection with this application, because of the fact that tents are needed on a fairly frequent basis and the intention of the applicant is to utilize those tents throughout the year for various events, this application this evening is seeking flexibility in terms of allowing tent usage all year long?
Correct.
And just to then go back to the tent structure itself, you mentioned that the frame stays in place?
In those situations, what we talked about with weather, but most of the time, if the tent's not being utilized for a hotel event, we take the entire thing away.
Okay.
How spaced the events, like, when would you take the tent away? If the hotel told you they're not going to have an event, you know, because I assume it's rented by time, right?
Right, so, you know, the hotel has events, she's every, all days of the week and then more so, seemingly for us anyway, more so in the warmer months. We will leave the tent, let's say there's an event on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then there's events coming up for the next week that they're going to utilize the same sized tent? The same sized tent is a big factor. It might stay for that period. Sometimes, sometimes we'll take the tent, we'll take a 30 by 80 tent down and the same crew will reinstall 30 by 30.
But if there was no tent event for like two weeks, would you leave the tent up? I mean, how long does it have to get?
Right.
How big does the space have to get if you leave, to take a tent down?
If there's not, in the wintertime, because of snow and things like that, if there's not an event the following weekend, we'll remove the tent. In the summertime, especially if the, we work very closely with the hotel and if they could use it, sometimes we'll leave the tent. If there's a weekend where there are no booked events, we'll still leave the tent for the hotel, if it's just easier for them.
How windy does it have to get, I mean, Friday, part of my fence blew down.
Yeah.
I live on a windy corner.
That would be no problem.
How fair, how high does the wind have to get to, you know, like, take the vinyl down?
The tents are designed for 90 mile an hour, three second bursts. So that's, it's strong, it's heavy, it's a very heavy duty piece of equipment. For Hurricane Sandy, we took all of our tents down. That's like, you know, we've been through, I mean, this past season, we were through some really high winds and we worked that night, that night, you know, the whole company, but everything was fine.
So something like Friday, like we had the past few days?
No problem.
That's no problem?
No problem at all.
So the hotel doesn't actually own the tents, they're like, doing it from you?
Correct.
And you're responsible for all the maintenance?
Yes, that's correct.
Your literature indicates that the tents are anchored by driving a pin into the ground. If you're in a concrete patio, how do you do it?
So we still utilize our four foot tent sticks in the grassy area around and then we also have anchor points affixed to that concrete patio. Each anchor point is more than five, is greater than 5,000 pounds of holding pressure.
So you do have, you presently have anchor points in the concrete now? Okay.
How do you run electricity then to the tents?
We have heavy gauge extension cords and all of our lights are all, you know, UOL tested and things like that. So on the side of the hotel, there's exterior.
Outlets.
Outlets right there.
So there's no big run of wires, it's right next to the tents?
Correct, yeah, no tripping hazards.
Is there ever music in the tents? Is there any?
Not in the tents, no, the music emanates from the hotel itself.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just one, so what I guess is that you're going to, you have flexibility in what size tent you put in there depending upon the.
I'd just like you to readdress the issue of the length of time that these tents would be up. You indicated that if there's a gap of maybe five to seven days, you'd leave it up, but if there's a gap of two weeks, you'd take it down?
That, yes.
What bothers me about this application is that theoretically, you could put up a tent on January 1st and keep it up all year round. I mean, that's what basically this application says. And I don't think that's what the planning board, I only speak for myself. I don't think that's what I would like to see. I'd like to see some sort of a commitment from the hotel. I guess you would not be the person who would commit to that, from the hotel as to when the tents would be up, when the tent would be up. And I understand, you know, what the parameters are, but.
So in connection with the application, that's actually a great question. It is something that we talked about previously with council and it came up during TRC as well. And what the applicant is actually proposing, which, you know, we're happy to discuss with the board, you know, to gauge the board's receptivity with respect to the use, is that the applicant would like in the summer months to have the flexibility to leave the tent up, obviously weather permitting, and then to the extent that there's extreme weather conditions or otherwise, the tent would come down, or if there's excessive periods of non-usage, the tent would come down. But during the winter months, the intention was in between usage, the tent would absolutely come down. So you're dealing with two periods of the year. You're dealing with the, you know, the spring timeframe, which I believe, let me just confirm, April through October, and then the winterized timeframe would be November through April.
And that allows you to have perhaps weekly, like weddings or special events or whatever during the summer?
It becomes also, it becomes a cost factor, it becomes a maintenance factor, it becomes an expense that's added on then to the individuals who are taking advantage of or utilizing the tent to the extent that you have to take it up and take it down and put it back up for each and every event when, during the summer months especially, you're having events Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. You know, the hotel, on average, I believe within the last year, held 80 weddings. And so the expectation certainly during the summer months is that it will be absolutely utilized every weekend. So the goal would be to keep it up, but during the winter months, absolutely it would come down. So we would look, we're looking to split the year into those two time periods.
So like, when does it become uneconomical for you to like, you know, go and take it down and put it back up? So like, if it's rented for every weekend, you might as well just leave it up for you from a cost basis?
That works best for all parties involved. Main reasons in the summertime is change of tent size, you know.
Do you change, do you change more often during the summer?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, so you are technically taking it down or modifying it and stuff?
So it seems to me that the intent of the regulation is to not have tents up in public areas that are for extended periods over the course of the year, whereas this is in the backyard basically of the hotel. So it seems that it's not really as applicable as it would be if you had tents out in the public right of way or in the middle of a park, right?
So basically, you're asking for permission to have the tent up from April through October and then from November through March, you're.
As needed, up and, right, up and down.
Couldn't we put something like a resolution in like, if it, it's not going to be used for seven days or more, five days or more, that it's taken down, that there's no tent up? How would we put that in a resolution?
Well, so, I mean, my question is more along the lines of, we have all these layouts. We have 30 by 15, we have 30 by 30, 45, then we have 10 feet, 10 feet, 50 feet on the plans that were submitted. And then you're showing arborvitae or some other plantings around, are those actually existing?
Yes.
So, and how high are those plantings?
Pretty high.
They're in excess of 12 feet, they're probably close to 15 feet.
And are they only on the south side and the west side? So west?
Yes.
Towards fourth and towards Kingsley? I'm sorry, towards fourth and towards, what's that, bird?
Bird. That's correct.
So there's nothing on the east side from the Kingsley view?
And they're proposing to put in a row, or the planner requested that a row shed?
That's for the shed.
There are arborvitae, but those are shorter. I believe that they were planted later.
I believe there's a photo within the tent plans, that there's a view across the parking lot?
Oh, yeah.
With the tent up and you almost can't see it, all you see is sort of the peaky top.
Yeah, you can just see the top of the, the top of the tents.
I can't recall, I'm trying to find it actually at the moment.
So currently, currently there's a hedge row that runs all along the parking lot and terminates here and then turns 90 degrees and goes back into the property. Our intention is to provide new plantings and what I would want to do is match what's being proposed and have that run across here, so that would block the view of the proposed. How tall are they? Pardon? How tall are those things? At planting height? Right now, the number is four foot. I'm sorry? Four foot in height? That's what currently exists, the shrug, the shrug right there, existing. So the question was, the arborvitae run across the west side and the south side and then there's a portion of arborvitae that's just going here. But they don't, they don't go anywhere entirely, all the way out to this edge.
And here's a picture looking from the side of the building and you can see the tent is actually up in this picture, believe it or not, behind.
Yeah, so the plan is for the shed is going to come out to that green, into the green space to where the niche is in the building, the existing building, right? This grassy area?
They should be in the back. Right, and the shed will also exactly.
So the existing plantings are going to stay and there's going to be a new row of plantings on the eastern side of the proposed shed?
Correct.
Okay, and what size are those and how big are they, how full are they?
We're going to match, we're going to match what's there, right now what exists today is approximately four foot.
Okay. So is it conceivable, say during the summer, you have a weekend event and then there's nothing for a couple of weeks, but then sometime in that time period, someone calls you and says, oh, do you have this weekend open, can we have? Like, I guess I'm getting this desire to include a limit, like at seven days, you take the tent down, but you may possibly get a request for an event and the tents, there's like no reservation for that particular weekend and somebody may, if you take the tent down, you have to put it right back up again.
Right.
So if I understand, I guess you had that picture, right? So the tent is going here?
Other side, behind those, yes.
The shed is going there. The shed is going to be right in line with the bump, the brick bump out in the glass, right in the foreground?
Yep.
Yeah, it's going to line up exactly where the front of that bump is and be about the same height. So it's going to look like.
I don't know, continue what you're going to do.
Yeah, exactly.
So what, how much of that grassy area is going to be taken up? Is it all going to be paved over or is there going to be some?
No, just.
Just the building footprint?
So, and it's 180 square feet.
Yeah. No, I know, I'm going to take up, see if you look at the drawing, it doesn't take up the entire space. So that's what I'm trying to see, there's going to be some grass and then some, the base of the shed's going to be cement and then it'll be grass.
That's correct.
Okay.
This quarter, can you go to page 33 of your submission on your computer? Maybe that'll help the board members, just to see, 33 through 36.
I'm not confused.
So here we go, yeah. So the first photo we provided, this is the Asbury Event Space Tent, this is Fourth Avenue looking north.
And there's a tent there.
There's a tent there right, right in this picture.
So that's the parking lot of the hotel?
Oh, it's the tent behind the truck and behind the arborvitae?
Right, great.
Yes, you can, you can see a tiny little bit. And then the next photo is the Asbury Event Space Tent, this is Fourth and Kingsley looking northwest. So again, the tent is also up in this picture.
So this is the hedge in the foreground of the parking lot.
So the tent is over on the upper left, right?
And that's the hedge that you're going to match to, for the Kingsley side?
The left is the Asbury length, right?
Correct. The left is those, the tent is actually, you can just see the top of the.
Oh, just a peak, the gable?
Exactly, just a little bit. The next photo is the tent and this is the view from Kingsley Street looking west. This is the photo that we were just talking about.
The tent's up there.
And the tent is also up in this picture.
And that's where the shed's going to be located as well?
Correct. And that's it.
So if that helps?
Yeah.
To kind of get a perspective.
I understand, I'm just trying to help others.
The intention is that it will be barely visible because it's placed on that outdoor patio, but surrounded by existing and then proposed landscape.
What was your point about the different configurations?
Well, so, so my, I mean, when you change the tent size, you're literally taking down one size and putting up a totally different size? Or are you piecing together tent sizes?
These tents are modular, so it's.
So 30 by 80 tent is a 30 by 80 tent?
And then we can make, we can make that two or three, we use the same pieces. Take pieces away, we use that same thing to make a 30 by 30.
Okay, with a different top though?
The top pieces are modular as well, it's called heater trap, they slide into the frame and then they're.
Are they rigid, are they rigid to top or is it?
No, it's heavy duty vinyl.
It is?
Yeah.
But are they on frames themselves that you say? I mean, this is not vinyl stretched over, right?
So this kind of, this type of tent model, it's called heater, I don't know if you've ever heard of it. It's like, the tent frame has channels in it and then the pieces of vinyl slide into those channels. And then of course, there's more ratchets and things like that to fix it to the corners.
But it's vinyl, like it could fold technically if it was a ratchet, right?
Yes.
And I guess that makes it, because you're saying it's modular, so I guess that makes it waterproof then too.
It's in, yeah, in the metal, yeah.
So Mr. Scanneman, going back to your question, it's always difficult to put restriction there because who's going to enforce it? Not you, not this board, it's going to have to be the municipality who has to enforce it.
Which is why you have the process in the first place.
Which, which rights. So you have to consider that in what you're approving or not approving with the application because it's difficult in these resolutions to say, okay, you have to do this, you have to do that. And then who's actually going to enforce it?
But if the board, I mean, people on the board did, you know, express that they didn't want it up 365. So then we would have to approve something that said otherwise, right? And then that would have to be enforced or, you know, or not caught, right?
And the enforcement is the hard part.
Yeah.
That is all I'm saying, you know, you're putting on someone else to enforce it and how do you enforce it? Someone goes out there and says, on, you know, June 2nd, tent's up, June 15th, tent's up. Oh, by the way, how many events did you have in that period of time? That actually becomes difficult.
So would we just allow it to 65 then?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying.
So can I understand the concern for it being up throughout the entire summer from the board? Those that are opposed to it?
I'm sorry, Rick?
What the reason for the opposition to it being up through the summer? Like your request to have it, a seven day limit set on, I'm just curious as to what the opposition to having it up through the summer months is?
I know, I really have no, I was just responding to Jim's comment about it being, you know, technically, it could be up the whole year.
Well, not the whole year.
And the applicant was saying, no, it'll be up pretty much up the whole summer, but not as much, you know, in the winter. And I was just saying, well, is there a mechanism, if that's what the board wanted, is there a mechanism to do that?
Okay.
I really have no opposition.
Okay.
I should ask this question to Mr. Curley. The concrete slab that's there now, I'm looking, it's called a concrete patio. What are the dimensions? It looks like at the top or the west end, it's 40 feet, but then it juts in 13 feet. So I can't figure out the length of it, so what are the dimensions? Because if it juts in 13 feet, a 30 by 80 doesn't fit on it, so it's going to be partly on the grass?
So looking at the Asbills survey, the concrete patio is not entirely rectangular. It's got a notch in it, is what you're saying.
Right, and it juts in thirteen feet, so.
So is the tent going to be in the notch or is it going to be overhanging?
The way this drawn is, it's going to be on the grass. Which I have no problem with, but somebody just tell me what's going on.
I mean, the, the tent on, on the east side, the tent is off the patio like this much on, on the grass.
A thirty by eighty?
Tiny, yeah, yeah, just a tiny bit.
A thirty by thirty, a thirty by thirty?
Thirty by thirty is totally on. Anything smaller than, than a thirty by eighty is completely on the, on the patio.
So you realign it to where it's total concrete?
Yeah.
So I just took a measurement on the, on the survey by scaling it. And if you ignore the notch, it's about forty feet off of the hotel, which is what's shown on the proposed side. And then the other dimension exceeds eighty. So if you ignore the notch, then the forty by, forty by eighty, I think is what you show, that fits on the existing patio.
If we ignore the notch.
No, no, I mean, I mean, a forty by eighty tent will fit on the existing patio without extending.
Without using the notch.
I don't see how that's possible. Maybe I'm reading wrong.
Up here it says it's forty feet. And here it says it's ducking in thirteen feet, so that's only twenty-seven feet.
Yeah, that, here, can I borrow your pen?
Yep.
So this right here is your forty. What I measured is from here to here, forty, and from here to somewhere over here is like a hundred. So if you were to do something like that, you'd have your forty by eighty. Does that make sense?
I believe you, but again, this says it's thirty knots, so I would say it's forty.
That is.
And this notch is in thirteen feet, so thirteen from forty is going to be twenty-seven.
No, no, it's not the whole length.
But you're saying this is forty.
Correct. I'll show you what you're, if I may borrow you. The forty that you're looking at over here is from here to here.
Okay.
So if you add this in, you have probably forty plus thirty, that's probably.
The gentleman who put us up the tents just testified that it does go onto the grass.
I think.
Well, yeah, I don't put them up. And I have no problem with it. Both reports question sound mitigation. As much as you say, it's just coming from inside the hotel.
That's correct.
What happens when it's too loud?
So the applicant fully intends to comply with the noise ordinance for the city. And so, you know, we fully agree, obviously, to comply with the requirements with respect to nuisance or otherwise. We did not see any limitations within the code specifically to the playing of music.
And I've never heard of any sound problems in the past several years.
And he took the words right out of my mouth. My next statement was there have not been.
And I've never heard of any sound problems.
Any complaints, correct.
But because it was raised by both professionals.
That's correct. There have not been any complaints or violations issued in connection with noise associated with outdoor vents at, at the Asberries or the use of the tent in the, in the seven years it's been utilized.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Professionals? Any questions from the public? Any comments from the public? Do I have to get a motion to open that for comments?
Yeah, you do.
Okay, can I get a motion to open public comments?
So.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Hey, guys. Michael Gunnin, eleven oh one Ocean Avenue. My one comment is about the plantings in front of the shed. Right now, there's this nice little lawn when you walk by and there's a lawn on either side of the Clinch Gallery. And my concern is if you extend the bushes right along the sidewalk on Kingsley, we're going to lose the entire lawn. There'll be like a grassy area between the shed and the, and the sidewalk that we kind of lose versus the way they proposed it where the plantings are right along the shed, then we still have that little flank of grass on either side of the Clinch, which I, I personally prefer, but I leave to you guys to discuss.
Was there a?
The applicant is willing to do it there.
Yeah. Was there a recommendation that it be moved to the side, edge of the sidewalk or?
I think it was in the.
No, there's still.
Yeah, I, I didn't think so.
There's still a grass strip behind the sidewalk.
Yeah, from there to where the proposed hedges, it still will remain. Okay.
Yeah, there's still a little strip.
Okay, any other comment from the board discussion?
My one comment is April to October is a very long summer. Summer doesn't usually start until May, June. So from April to October, you want to leave it up for the entire length of that time?
So we, it's not in our best interest as a company to, to leave it up on a tented. I mean, you know, UV rays destroy tent tops. It's exposure, you know, in case there is a small storm or something like that. It's, it's in my benefit just to not leave the tent there the entire time. That's why we don't. And we're there all, we, we are there so much and sometimes it's modifying the tent. I would say we.
Could the summer be defined as from Memorial Day weekend to after Labor Day weekend? How would that?
Oh, there's a.
It stays continuously and then it can go up as needed during the other months, but that potentially would come down more as opposed to being left up the entire time.
Well, we need him to, we need, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Hello?
Correct, that's what you were saying.
We need him to swear, maybe he's going to testify. By Jennifer, Jennifer.
I mean, Mr. Fergel, you're.
Well, I mean, I'll have a conversation back and forth, so. Okay. So would the applicant be opposed to having the summer defined as Memorial Day to October or shortening it from April, you know, not having it as long as April to October and then just up and down as needed in those earlier months?
Well, can I just say something?
Yeah.
Even the city recognized, there's the peak season and there's the shoulder seasons. And what they're asking for is the shoulder seasons, which is kind of in alignment with what the city does for all special events and everything. So they're not asking for anything that isn't being done by the city now. So I, I have no problem with it.
And if we're not going to put a mechanism in to limit the use to certain periods, then it's a moot point. Good point, Dan.
The only question comes back to parking. More employees means more on-street parking. So if you have, all these people have to be there to take the snow off the roof and everything else, where do they park?
That's a valid question and as part of our testimony, there are no additional employees that are being added in connection with the use of these two spaces.
Well, there is.
They would be utilizing their existing employees.
Well, there is. There's a guy taking the snow off the roof in the winter. The guy with the big thing pulling the snow off the roof. That is a new employee.
So, you know, that's one, one person with one, one parking spot, I guess, that's probably moving around throughout the night to other tent locations.
So all paid the parking meter. Well, you got to say, all paid the parking meter.
Yeah. We do, we do, we, 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 when, when, when we're there or just talking to each other for there, they're just.
Okay. Again, just because it was in both reports, I just wanted to ask it.
Understood.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
So let's just recap what we're getting a motion for.
What, what are we approving?
Motion to approve the application.
But we, we did have a request that they articulate the, the building, the shed with some kind of brickwork, running brickwork or something. So that should be in the resolution, right? We did request that and they agreed to make some modifications.
About the hedges, what does the board prefer?
I think they agreed to whatever the planner recommended in the report. So I think that's really the only specific.
No, are we moving it to the sidewalk?
No, no, it's going to stay where, where it's proposed on the, on the plan, which is adjacent to the shed and leaving the green space from the hedge to sidewalk.
Like her Ghana's recommendation or?
No, I mean, that's, that, how, how the plan is, how it's presented in the plan. I think the brickwork was the only modification. Everything else, I think, and we're going, we're fine with the dates, April to October. So that's the motion.
And I just want to ask, who's going to decide about the architecture being acceptable? Because I'm not sure what you are asking them to do.
I guess the DRC? I don't know. How does that work? If it's not really presented to us, we're just kind of leaving it open, how does that work?
Would you be open to coming back prior to the resolution being adopted or simultaneously? Just, just to present the architecture?
As part of the memorial occasion?
Was there agreement at the board? Was there general agreement at the board?
Well, they're going to do some kind of brickwork on it. But the requirement is very early, it's not.
Would the application be approved this evening? Potentially, would the application be approved this evening?
I'm, I'm not sure if the board members are, have consensus on that point.
Well, I'm sorry, I was talking, what, what consensus are we talking about?
On the architecture features of the shed.
Had them come back when we are adopting the resolution?
Well, what are we asking for?
Right. I, I.
The request by Jim was that they do some kind of articulation of the building so that it's a little nicer than just a brick shed.
The elevation has articulation.
No, I agree.
And, and I would also say that it quite matches.
I mean, yeah, because the Asbury has really no.
The plainness of the existing building is plain. And, and let's not, let's not belabor that this is essentially a utility or service building.
And it's going to be behind shrubs.
And it's going to be behind the shrubs, it's barely visible. You know, so I'm not sure that it's, not, not to, I, I'm, Jim, I understand your perspective, but I feel like the work of making the building fit in is being done by the landscape and the screening, not by the architecture of the building, which fundamentally matches the building that's near.
Okay, so then let's.
In other words, I'm saying, I find the architecture acceptable.
So then let me, can I get a motion from someone stating what we want?
As I indicated before, I, I think the building is just too boxy and too plain. And I don't think, I don't, I disagree with Eric. I don't think it matches, yeah, the color of the brick, it matches. But a box with a slope roof does not match, in my opinion, does not match the hotel. And I, since it's very possible this is going to be seen even through the screening, I'd just like to see it look a little nicer, that's all.
So should we vote on that?
And I, I do not articulate what that niceness is, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
So.
We reviewed this at the, Yvonne and I both reviewed this application at the TRC and did not make any recommendations for modifications to our construction. So, you know, the, the rest of the board will have to come to consensus about it, but those are the.
So I think someone can introduce a resolution for what they want to see and then the board can vote whether they support it or.
Did I miss, was there a rendering of the building itself?
Yes.
Well, there's, I mean, there's, there's demonstrations of the building.
Was the elevation of the shed? It's on.
I didn't see that.
Correct. It's on, um, the, I don't know. Yes, thank you. Uh, yes, seventy-three. I mean, it has, the window has the.
Can I get that up there?
I think basically it'll look like this.
Oh, that's it right there.
Little bump, sort of mirrors.
Can you zoom in a little?
Yeah. Hedge across the front.
Yeah.
I'm personally okay with the rendering.
And I need a resolution. I mean, uh, not a resolution, a motion. I need someone to make a motion.
I make a motion to allow the applicant to proceed with the current design.
Second.
Question. But if they wanted to try to make it better, sure, try, right? Thank you.
Great. Certainly, the applicant can, can absolutely look at trying to make it better based on the discussion held before the board this evening.
I will take roll call. James Manano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Gallobo?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin is abstaining. Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Karzak is absent, so.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Ninety miles an hour.
So just because when we run one for the, the.
Thank you.
We have him in the back.
Okay, so let's revisit six fourteen, click me.
If I may, Andrew Carras behalf of the applicant, six fourteen LLC. I planned on having my architecture tonight to go through what are relatively simple revisions after the question before the last time, before they recall. The only issue that we were working through were issues having to signage, there were recommendations to make certain revisions to, and those revisions are reflected in the plan, that's the extent of what is to testify in that. Then we'll show what's clear. To respect that aspect, we've seen that work, that's the extent of what was done with these plans. I can mark them and I know that the board professionals have reviewed them. And then if the board is so informed, we can then proceed from there.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Pretty comfortable with moving forward?
Yeah.
Professionals?
Is Mr. Carras going to testify?
I think he just, I think he just did.
I will identify the plans that we see. Last thing we want you to do is step outside the statute.
I want you to do it all while I can.
So the only, uh.
That's the. Six fourteen, okay.
So I just want to make sure that when we get to this, that we have some specific language about trying to maintain the style of the, of the existing blade type that's sticking out, just like that. I, I know we, we can't see it in the drawings. So it says it will be cleaned and reutilized, but like we would like it to look in character to what exists. So whatever script or type goes up there should use common materials. You shouldn't like clean it up and change it completely. It just shouldn't feel like it was a historic. They, they can reuse it because it says fitness lifestyle.
Well, the panel is not going to use it.
The structure itself is going to be very. Well, but my point is that when you put it back up there, that the sign that's there has like specific kind of stylistic neon lettering. So I'm just saying that whatever you put back there should feel in character to that. It doesn't have to match the words.
And it should, should have a.
It should have a retro pastiche.
It should have much.
Which should have a similar retro character.
One hundred percent on board. I think that look actually is one of the elements of the building that we wanted to reserve.
Now, wasn't there an issue of the amount of signage that the square footage exceeded what was permitted, so they needed variance?
That's included within, why am I doing this? Let me just identify the eight, eight would be the plan I submitted by November, the signage from eighteen hundred, which is the revision date of January twenty-sixth. As I indicated, we've got captions, all the comments from before last time, including putting the signage under the overhang. including putting the signage under the overhang. The measurement is square footage, but on the front on Cookman Avenue, also on Lake Ave where that's on reflective.
Will those be in the oven too?
Are they recessed at the back of the window or are they hanging forward, like?
Hanging under.
Yeah, more toward the street side or are they back towards the glass? It's kind of like a... No, definitely not that.
I don't like believe it's right towards that front. I don't know exactly the position.
It says see floor plans for recess, uh, that's recessed.
The overhang actually butts the sidewalk. But it's... The sidewalk is not... There's no overhang over the sidewalks. I think the signs, the intention was that they would hang right there at the edge of the overhang.
Shouldn't they have a recess because they probably want the lighting in front of it, right? The lighting is in the soffit, right? Probably that one.
Are there any other questions from the board or planters or professionals?
Does a lawyer make more than an architect? How you doing?
Yes, absolutely, we do.
How are you doing tonight?
Doug's saying, do you get paid for two things? Are there any comments from the public? I mean, questions from the public?
So I just wanted to... Since we've got this kind of like mishmash of things going on, I did send an email around this afternoon to both Jason and Mr. Beekman. Based on the various versions of the architectural and the site plans, I have one discrepancy in the site plan not reflecting the lighting on Cookman Avenue under the soffit, the recessed lights. So they should just revise the site plan to note the additional lights. Just let me roll, let me roll. Really, I don't wanna be here until 10 o'clock either. So even though they may not have, you know, a footprint of light within the right way or anything, let's just make sure that they're together. Remember, we were very concerned about both the architectural plan and the site plan representing all the same stuff. My... Going through, it looks like the site plan is last revised 12/2022. The architectural plans were 1/26/23.
Just A6 is the engineering plan, the site plan is December 2022. The architectural plan is 7 was December 16/2022. And then there's 1G 8200.
Right, but that's part of that set.
Right, which is revised tonight.
Okay. The only variances that are needed now are minimum ground floor frontage, which is on the lakeside, and minimum setback penthouses, which is the existing microformity. Design exceptions for minimum size of parking spaces, because you're doing 8 by 18 and the ordinance is 8 and 1/2 by 18. The use of compact spaces, because you have a bunch of compact spaces in there and you don't have at least 50 parking spaces, and that's the ordinance threshold. There is no designated loading area. The driveway width, minimum driveway width is supposed to be 24 feet. As it comes through the building, it's 22. Minimum ground floor window area, bulkhead below the storefront window needs to be at least 14 inches, it's only 8 inches. Total sign area, because we have five sign faces now, plus the blade sign. And then the size of the blade sign and the use of a blade sign in addition to wall-mounted signs. And then, you know, what is this last one? Oh. We don't have an architect. But perhaps someone recalls from the previous testimony, there was a change on Lake Ave's side of the glass on the balconies. It says folding. So are those hinged folding? They're not sliding? How do those... Might need a design exception for sliding.
They have a U-folded glass door system as reflected on...
So some of those are designed to slide and they ratchet back, and others are actually hinged. So I would say we're... I think because everybody was pleased with the design last time, that if they are sliding, it's an applicable exception.
When you're talking about the wall, 18 inches?
Yeah.
Are you talking about like in front of the storefront?
In the storefronts, yes. The glass and the glass.
Are they maintaining the original wall?
No.
So it's all new construction? So they just wanna be the glass?
Yeah, and the ordinance is kind of like... It wants both things. It wants a lot of glass area, but then it also wants this traditional height of the bulkhead. So it's kind of a trade-off. They've only got 8 inches.
8 inches?
Which is about the size of a kick on the door, you know, your kick plate. Which is better than the glass coming all the way down. So there's at least the bulkhead. And then I think one of the outstanding conditions was, per the testimony last time, the gas meters can't be moved indoors, so they have to stay outside with the regulator. And we just want all of the exterior piping on the upper walls and whatnot removed. And that there should be a recess in the facade to accommodate the meter and the meters and the regulator. So they don't stick out from the...
Thank you for recapping it.
And then I think there were also at the last meeting some concerns about construction staging, that we wanted to maintain pedestrian access on both Cookman and Lake during the construction phase. So I guess that just has to get worked out in a pre-construction meeting, maybe?
Correct.
And that's, I think, everything I've got. We were sore before.
Thank you for recapping those items. So is there any other discussion or questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Can I get a motion open for public comment?
So move.
So I second. Motion to close. Second.
Do you have to take a roll call?
Oh, sorry. I'm in another world. James Manano?
Here. Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Gallope?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara is absent.
Okay, can I get a motion?
So move.
With all the items listed? Can I second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
James Manano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Gallope?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo?
I can't vote on this one.
Duly noted. Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Karzak is absent.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, I'd like to throw something out to the board. I was thinking about the problem we had at 545 Lake. And I wonder if it might not be appropriate when we approve these major developments that we require that the applicant provide us with... Provide the city with a performance bond. Had we had a bond on this particular project, we wouldn't have the trouble that we have now. And I'd just like to throw that out for board members to consider when we go to our next application.
Thank you for bringing that up.
So bonds are not within the zoning ordinance? Bonds are within the construction department and that portion of the ordinance. And that would have to be approved by the council, mayor council.
And those are only Republican groups?
And right, and they're only Republican groups.
In this particular case, we have a situation where... And I'm not proposing this is what the applicant is going to do. But if the applicant decided to close up shop tomorrow and walk away and leave that property, the city has one big mess on its hands. And because the city has an interest in this, I believe that the city could require as a condition of approval that the planning board could require as a condition of approval the posting of a performance bond running to the city.
Well, and that may be, but that's not this board's problem. That has to be something the city...
Maybe, okay. And maybe I should make that recommendation to them.
The determination doesn't what the bonding amounts are and those things. That's all done on the development side.
Exactly, that's outside of the...
Right.
And is it... I assume it's outside of the... Issue would be, you know, that it was not built according to what was approved. You know, that's on somebody that's expected. I assume it's outside of our power to do that.
This is not part of the meeting.
That they have a certification by engineers and architects.
Jim, I mean, Daniel.
As built as...
Can I get a motion to adjourn? It's gonna be carried on outside of the meeting.
We can't talk about another project if we're not in a...
Right. Right. We're talking about outside of the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? I'm meeting adjourned.